The Columbus City Council Meeting for June 5th, 2023 will now come to order. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, Nebraska Revised Statute 84-1407, a current copy of this act is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Bulkeley.
Here.
Augustine Schulte.
Here.
Barr.
Here.
Freshour.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll's been called.
Thank you. Mrs. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions that have been entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and courtesy to each other, as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose red stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming, and the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. If at any time during our meeting this evening anyone in our audience would like to come up and address the council, we'd ask that you please come forward, come to the podium. We'd ask that you give your name, your address, and we'd also ask that you keep any comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll begin with the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless the city council member or citizen so requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the May 15th, 2023 city council meeting. Item 4B, change of the date of the first meeting in July of 2023 to 7:00 PM on Wednesday, July 5th, 2023, due to moving to the new community building. Item 4C, reappointment of Robert Elsasser to the Planning Commission for a three-year term. Item 4D, reappointment of Toby Gock, Thomas A. Losky, Neil Karnas, Mark Bierman, and Bill Elton as an alternate to the Board of Adjustment for three-year terms. Item 4E, Title 3B, supportive services. Title 3C, nutrition. Title 3E, family caregiver support. Grant funding from Northeast Nebraska Area Agency on Aging for the Senior Center. Item 4F, invoice from Johnson Services Company in the amount of $14,000 for emergency repairs to the sewer main related to the construction project on 23rd Street and East 11th Avenue. Item 4G, Resolution Number R23-74, approving the agreement with GEO Comm. Incorporated in the amount of $34,174 for GIS maintenance services for the Joint Communication Center. Item 4H, Resolution Number R23-75, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. And Item 4I, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and Council, is there anything you would like removed from consent?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing. Consider proposed downtown business improvement, District Number Three, general vicinity from the alley south of 11th Street to the alley north of 14th Street, between 23rd Avenue and 33rd Avenue and the Evans House, 2204 14th Street.
All right, we'll begin this with anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening. Joshua Johnson, 3907 53rd Street, 68601. I represent the Chair of the BID that was recently appointed and conveyed over the last year. Over the course of this time, we've gone from town hall meeting to outside influence, to bringing in professionals, to going to other communities to see what they're doing that are making their downtowns thrive. Throughout that time, we've kind of been hit along the way with, you know, what do we want it to look like? How do we want it to function? We've been pulled into different directions that perhaps were not applicable to the DIB. Most recently, kind of the park, and I'll touch on that in just a moment. What I do want to talk about, though, is kind of our process as the board. The board is a diverse group. The board didn't always agree on everything. And in fact, there's several times throughout the discussions that we didn't also agree on boundaries, assessments, et cetera, where we wanted to hear what the public feedback was going to be. So we asked people to come to those meetings. Some people said they couldn't find those meetings, couldn't locate it, couldn't find minutes. It's there. There was been plenty of opportunity that we tried to get and collect as much as we could. The first meeting, when we talked about boundaries, we threw out the proposed boundaries and we found that with the original postcard that was mailed out, that 11th Street did not want to be a part of the BID. And we found that kind of out by the highway didn't feel like they needed to be in the BID. As a group, we collectively talked. We bounced around the idea and we felt that just because a tract separates our downtown doesn't mean that we can't incorporate 11th Street. Because we've also heard feedback that 11th Street was always kind of like put on the side. It wasn't as important in 13th Street. It never got the decorations that 13th Street had. It never had the banners. It had the leftover stuff. So we wanted to change that perception and grow the city holistically, not just 13th Street. You know, towards the highway, we talked and proposed about bringing it in further to the east. And what we found is 13th Street exit come with the current layout, for the most part, is kind of the entry point to downtown. So we did not want to change that perception that downtown district did not start there, and that's why we elected to keep it in. From the assessment period, the assessment originally started as an uncapped assessment for $100,000 per assessed value, assessed at $250. Okay, so then we threw out, you know, everyone was wondering why can't it just be an even flat fee? Because that's kind of what the DBA was doing. The problem was then you would have, you know, a square footage building of 250 square feet paying the same dollar amount as, let's say, Artsy Haven, which covers basically a half a city block, right? So we were like, well, that's not going to work because everyone's going to... So socialistically, it wasn't going to work. We couldn't make it just even a flat rate for everyone. So then we said, what is the big proponent? We don't want to punish individuals who have invested into their buildings and have taken care of their properties because their assessed value is going to be more than those buildings that have been converted into storage units. So what we wanted to do is, okay, so in order to do that, we will cap it. So we ended up capping the total assessed value at 750 and then moved along the way. In regards to the park that recently came up, I apologize, I wasn't at the last meeting. The DIB was asked if what their feelings were, if they would approve or accept the city plan to improve the park. The board voted on making the park more usable because we believe in a walking district of downtown. You know, we could argue about the cement all we want. And the flags, we probably should have taken that into more consideration. But overall, there's no reason that the board felt that the park couldn't serve as a memorial and as a functioning space for the community to use holistically. So that's kind of where we're at. We repulled, you know, I think you have the data in front of you. I don't know it off the top of my head, but I'm sure you'll cover it. You know, we feel even as a board, we are looking at something that's sustainable, that's something that, you know, has a clause in it that we would reevaluate it after a certain time period. So we tried to accommodate as many ill feelings to make it work in regards to the people that did want it. So I think it's about 50/50 probably where it came in. And I'm sure, I don't know how the whole district was voted. I don't know what the total votes were. I think we got 52% maybe vote in. And I think if the trend would continue, it'd probably stay, give or take, about 50/50. I think that's where it's at. Why do I feel that way? Because even our board amongst our arguments was kind of 50/50 on some things. So I think we try to do our best to accommodate for everything we can. We hope that you will seriously consider about not only beautifying downtown, but making it sustainable. Thank you.
Mayor, move the public hearing be closed?
Second.
Any other questions from the public?
I'm the gentleman, Joe Wimhoff, 4508 23rd Street. I'm the man who has the property out on the highway. I just want somebody to tell me, what am I going to get for my dollar? They're not going to do anything out there. They told me that, well, they consider my property the gateway to downtown. So what does that mean? That means you're just going to get taxed for it anyway? You know, I've never gotten anything. I asked once for a grant to help fix up some of my buildings. They told me, well, you're not in the area. You're not eligible. That's all for down here. So if I'm not eligible for that, why should I be eligible to be taxed approximately $6,000 to fix up this downtown? I'm not going to get a dime's worth of benefit out of it. Ain't going to attract any more cars over there. I got 40,000 plus go by there every day anyway. So I don't need any more traffic.
Sure, just one point of clarification. The BID did propose to cap it at $700.
Yeah, but over a six-year period?
Five years is what they're talking about.
Well...
Two properties.
Right. Just for clarification purposes.
Yeah, I understand that.
And then the BID, obviously, I'm not a member of the BID, but they did have extensive conversation about the expansion to the highway. And they talked about all signage going everywhere in the district, like banners and things. They talked about signage at entry points to draw more traffic to the district. So they did talk extensively about making improvements to the whole district. Josh, I don't know if you want to say anything else other than that, but that was basically the conversation.
Well, all the banners are going to be forced to direct people downtown. But for me, it's not going to bring any more business to those businesses over there. So I'm just getting taxed for nothing, just to pay for somebody else's beautification. I bet I ain't even going to get any Christmas lights. Thank you.
So let me ask, Josh, and maybe you could answer this. You know, in the discussion about the entrance of where we are, I think, yes, that is the entrance to downtown Columbus. But if signage is the important thing, is there any discussion of working and having a discussion with these property owners to come on board with signage at the downtown business district?
I think overall, I mean, a lot of feedback at the town hall was specifically towards marketing and how are you going to market the businesses? How are we going to update or provide websites, geo-fencing? How are we going to talk about not just drawing to one specific area, let's say, the park, or to tweets, or wherever that destination may be, or a doctor's office, lawyer office? But how do we market the whole area? Discussion with the business owners was going to take place in our proposed budget. We did leave dollars there to specifically address those needs that did not uncover throughout the whole process. The big underlying tone was direct marketing to specific areas and specific geo-fenced areas. So, yes, the answer would be yes. We need to outlook or better outreach in regards to that.
Any other comment? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Rose Nelson. I live up by college. And a couple of years ago, when you were giving grants to beautify the businesses downtown, I applied for a grant and they told me, you are not a business. You're just a landlord. But now, all of a sudden, this year, I'm a business because you want me to pay taxes. So I just don't think it's fair. I already got duped on 23rd Street. I have to pay $518. This was my first year. I have to pay that for 15 years, which is going to be almost $8,000, which the whole town and everybody going through is going to use 23rd Street, not just the poor people who are living close to that area. So it just doesn't seem fair to me.
23rd Street is an entirely different issue, but for the record, that is not an increase in taxes. It is a separation of property taxes paid. It is not an increase. It is not an increase for the project.
Well, and, you know, not knowing the particular grants you were talking about, it certainly could have had specific items that could be covered and it could have been the way the grant was written, ma'am. I don't know that. But there's a lot of parameters that go into many of those types of grants. Anyone else here to speak against this? Yes, sir. Well, yes, sir. Should we close?
What do you want to go?
Well, should we close the discussion and then have council discussion?
That's fine.
I mean, if there's no one else in the public that wants to add in, we might as well close the public hearing and then bring it up to the council for discussion. Well, if somebody wants to make that...
Close the public hearing. No second.
We have a motion and a second. Close the public hearing. Any, all those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right.
Item 7A1, ordinance number 23-05, creating the downtown business improvement district number three.
All right, discussion from council?
Hang on.
Or do you... I'm sorry, councilman?
Mr. Mayor, may the rules be suspended and ordinance number 23-05 be read by number only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt or to read ordinance number 23-05 by number only. Any discussion? Councilman Barr.
We had 198 potential votes. As of 3:55 this afternoon, there were 46 that voted yes. There were 56 that voted no. So that's 51.52% of the postcards that were turned in. Are we still counting the ones that failed to return their card as a positive?
The state statute says that if 51% oppose a district, you cannot move forward with the ordinance. 51% did not oppose, 51% of the property owners did not oppose the district. That is why it's on the council agenda tonight.
So 51.52% of the cards turned in does not amount to 52...
No, because...
Or 51%.
Because of so many that didn't do anything.
So basically, you're taking the assumption that because they didn't vote, it's a yes.
We aren't. The state does, and the city also does for every assessment district.
Now, where in the state statute does it say that that's how it's done?
Yes, it does.
What state statute is that?
Well, Gene, I don't know if you have a record of it right now, but we have studied it extensively. And Councilman Barr, the every assessment district that the city does, whether it's water, sewer, street, storm, or this, follows that same state statute and as does the city council.
Well, when we asked city staff, we were told there is no precise verbiage. The statute states that proceedings shall terminate if written protest is made prior to the close of the hearing by the record owners of over 50% of the assembled units in the proposed business improvement district. So if 50% of the property owners do not provide written protest, then the conclusion is the ones not filing their protests are not against the measure.
Correct.
So because they were busy that day and they didn't get their postcards sent in, now they get to get taxed. They were on vacation.
Yeah, you can certainly vote against it, but that is how state statute is written.
Well, proceed with your...
Any other...
Well, we're just voting right now for the rules to be suspended. We're not voting on the actual ordinance.
Right. Well, nowhere's going to end up from there. Any other comments on suspending the rules? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay.
Ordinance number two... Sorry, do you want to announce that?
Motion pass.
Ordinance number 23-05.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number 23-05.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 23-05. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Move on to public hearings.
Item 7B, public hearing. Application of Balaha Petroleum LLC doing business as Dual Stop Columbus for retail Class D liquor license at 3417 14th Street.
I'd ask if anybody here is to speak against this public hearing? I don't see anybody. And I bet there's somebody here to speak for this public hearing. And he's really excited because he's already up here.
Mullen Patel on behalf of Balaji Petroleum, located at 3472 14th Street.
Awesome. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move.
Second.
There's more to the motion.
Just to close it?
To approve the application.
Oh, to close the... Yeah, can we have a motion to close the public hearing? Yeah, go ahead.
Still move. To close the public hearing. You cheated again.
Yeah, to approve the application.
Saving words.
Okay. Charlie, close the public hearing to approve the application. Who seconded that?
I did.
All right. Cat seconded that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by aye. Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, application of Dual Stop Columbus for Niraj Patel as a manager in conjunction with the liquor license.
I'm Niraj Patel. I'll be the manager for Balaji Petroleum, which is going to be DBA Dual Stop Columbus.
Any questions? No, seeing none. We will wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
We need a motion and a second.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application of Dual Stop Columbus for Niraj R. Patel as manager be approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Motion passes. Brings us up to reports of city offices.
Item 9A, schedule for the library and city hall move to the new community building. Mr. Bogus, do you want to highlight this for us?
Sure. I guess in general, it is going well. It's on schedule, which is good. Schedule is always something that is very fluid. I mean, we're down to the final, you know, 5% of the project, which is the hardest part. You see in your packet that you have like a project schedule. That's the short version. I got a much, much longer version than that because we're at the point now that if one thing doesn't get done on time or comes in correctly or needs reworked or something, it kind of affects the entire schedule. There's always something. But I guess the highlights in general is you start to see some work over at the rescue mission. They have provided us a date of a June 15th move out. So after that, you know, we're going to do everything we can to salvage any materials that might be worth something there. And that applies to, the rescue mission applies to city hall and to get there to apply to this building when we get there. It's followed by hazardous material removal. It's a requirement, of course, we have to do. So there's some days into that and you'll start seeing the demo. As far as a new building, I mean, you can see the outsides gain a lot further along. They've started to remove jersey barriers today. They're finishing up the painting on the exterior. There's some concrete to be done yet. Of course, nothing's going to happen on the east side because that's where we have to, you know, tear down city hall. Internally, they're doing the final painting, the final carpeting. The community room is probably one of the later things that is getting done, unfortunately, due to a delay of our operable wall in the middle. But they started carpeting it today. That's, again, set stuff and delayed a little bit further. So the audiovisual part of the community building or the community room up in there will be a little bit delayed. And that's, again, that's where the city councils will be. But we're working on it. We know you're going to be there on July 5th because I was paying attention earlier. And so we'll do what we can to get everything in order for that. But the rest of the building is coming together pretty well. After, of course, we, after we've been to city hall, which we're planning on, book move from here, from the library, I should say, starts June 28th. Get everything moved in there by July 3rd or on July 3rd, anyway. City Hall itself was planning on moving over July 3rd. And so we'll have everybody over there at that July 3rd date. And then, of course, July 4th. And then July 5th, we would be open for business over there on the city hall side. And I think the library will be maybe that Friday or Saturday or something like that a little bit later. We'll have the planned ribbon cutting ceremony. So the building will be very operational, very usable at that point. Because of things that happen, there'll still be things that need to be done inside, minor things I won't even get into. There's some carpings to be replaced that we know of already. There's some doors that didn't get done correctly, things of that nature. But I guess all in all, everything is moving really well and happy with the progress. And does anybody have any questions?
Very good. So the summary of all that is we'll have our January 5th council meeting in the new building. And the official ribbon cutting will be on Saturday, July 8th.
That's correct.
And more details to follow. Thank you very much. Brings us up to report of council committees.
Item 10A, actually, excuse me. Item 10A, Committee of the Whole, June 5th, 2023. Item 10A1, Emergency Medical Services for Duncan Rural Fire District and Columbus Rural Fire District. The Committee of the Whole recommends that county contribute $600,000 and respond to the city by July 1st and take to referendum by October 1st if needed.
Mr. Mayor, I move that this committee report be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion?
I don't know if the intention was to take to a referendum by October 1st. Didn't you want an answer before October 1st from a referendum? I'm sorry, I'm just looking to you, Mr. Heimer, because you...
No, you're right.
You're right.
Okay, we'll make that correction.
The correction would have been an answer by July 1st with knowing what is going to happen or termination of services by October 1st.
Which means the referendum would have to be before that.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Any council members, have any, anybody in the public have any comments? Yes, sir.
What were those dates again?
July 1st for notification to us on what their intentions are. October 1st by the results of a referendum.
Hi, I'm Kevin Schuler. I live 3410 88th Street, north of town. I am the current president of the Rural Fire Board. I just got a couple of comments or maybe questions here. So the understanding is the city will not accept anything under $600,000. That has been the offer since the get-go. There's been no really compromise on your part, in my opinion. We've sent two offers now to you, a conditional one, which hasn't been voted on, doesn't sound like it's going to do much good, anyway. Because we're only willing to go, our fire district is willing to go along... Because we're only willing to go, our fire district is willing to go along with Dunkin's up to the three hundred thousand. So if I understand this correctly, the six hundred thousand dollars is going to be used for six additional firefighters. So this six hundred thousand dollars is paying for six additional firefighters for ten percent, depending on which side of the fence you're on, of the calls. Ninety percent of that will be used by the city, is that correct? Is that a fair statement?
Well.
These six firefighters aren't just gonna be sitting.
No, they're not just gonna be sitting, but they're gonna be there when the call comes in. Are you willing to not have them sit there? Let me turn that question around.
No, I, I get that.
Are you willing to not let them sit there?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I think if the shoe was on, on the other foot, you'd be doing the same thing.
I certainly would, Kevin, so I appreciate where you're coming from. So please understand my response.
And I get that, but there, there's really been no negotiation, as far as I'm concerned. From you folks, it's always been six hundred thousand.
Because we came up with a number that handled the need. We didn't, we didn't, and I, I guess I would, I would refer to Chief Gray. We did not come up, we didn't just pull a number out of the, out of the air. You know, we did not look at this as the golden goose. I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay.
By may, I think in the beginning, it was closer to a million dollars.
It was one point two or one point four.
And that, that included the ambulance and all the equipment. Were the city making concessions to supply that?
Again, that shoe being on my foot, who's gonna use that ambulance more? The city or that ten percent calls? Okay? I, I get what you're saying, I know what side of the fence you're on, you know what side of the fence I'm on, but there should be some middle area here that, that needs to be discussed. I, I think we're being very fair as far as the fire boards are going. I mean, we're taking our levy as it is now, basically times three, to get to three hundred thousand. To get to six hundred thousand, we're taking our levy times six. And we're talking about agricultural people out there that are gonna be paying more. I mean, people in Columbus complain about their taxes, okay? They got a hundred by hundred foot lot. What about the farmers that got sections? And we're gonna be basically paying the same, or they're gonna be paying the same taxes you hear in town. So. Well, we've given you an option to, to go to a vote. You're not giving me an option. Yeah, we're giving you the option to, to vote. We, we don't have the money to go to six hundred thousand. That, we, we gotta be fair to our constituents, as, as you would be too. But if your constituents want it, you'll find the money. Okay. That's all I can say, they want the service, they're gonna, I mean. They want the service, we want the service. But, but it, for the years, you've been getting it for nothing, and now all. And whose fault is that, if I might ask? That's ours. Okay, then that doesn't really need to be thrown in our face all the time. It's not. It's been said several times tonight and earlier. Okay? I, I, I'm just stressing my point here. We are, we are not opposed to paying, we just want to pay that fair price. That's all we're getting at. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please.
Bob Slazarsky, I live right in front of Dunkin'. One of the things that hasn't been brought up is the actual numbers, we use percentages. Dunkin' is thirty-three calls a, a year, and it's, Columbus is a hundred and twenty-four. The three hundred thousand have come to about nineteen hundred dollars per call. Half of them or better are picking up gramp off the floor, plus insurance. So it's a very fair amount, and we're gonna do that for two years. Then after that, our proposal is, we pay whatever it costs. The six hundred thousand is, I'm with Kevin. It's, uh, we're paying the whole bill. Thank you.
Well, please recognize, though, the way the thing has been put together is the money will come in as, as it, as the staff grows. You're not gonna hire, you know, we're not gonna hire six guys tomorrow. You've got to hire them and train them. And, you know, so you may be at three hundred thousand in a year and a half to two years as we're growing that staff.
Yep, and we're ahead of the game, three hundred thousand is, is regardless if you hire one or none. The next three hundred thousand is, you got two years to put the staff together, and then we're gonna pay a per call, whatever it costs. So we are paying our spare share, unlike what I've heard. And a past is past.
Any other comments from the public? Any councilman, have any, any council members have any comments? All right. We have a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item ten A two, implementation of discretionary capital improvement project policy. The committee of the whole recommends the discretionary capital improvement project policy be approved.
Mayor? Go ahead, Cat.
I move the report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt this committee report. Any discussion? None, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item ten A three, review of city council rules. The committee of the whole recommends the city council rules be approved as amended to change the meeting times to six P M.
I move the committee report be adopted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt the committee report, which will establish a new starting time for council meetings, which would be six o'clock, and a new starting time for planning and zoning, which would be six o'clock. Those dates would go into effect August first. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item thirteen A, appointment of Robin Cutser to the planning commission for a three-year term.
Council members, with your permission, the mayor would like to submit the name Robin Cutser for, um, uh, planning commission to fill the unexpired term of Kimberly Heffer until July twenty-twenty-five. Robin Cutser is a Columbus resident and has worked at Scheckor Prokopek Wealth Management since two thousand thirteen. Due to her flexible job and the encouragement of her employers, she has been able to volunteer in several capacities. Robin recently served on the park board for the city of Columbus for the past nine years. She is currently on the board at Peace Lutheran Church and has taught the youth at midweek. She is an advocate for CASA connection, serving also as the treasurer. Ms. Cutser has served in several different roles for Platte County Relay for Life, including being the co-chair for about six years. She is also a part of the Columbus Cancer Care Foundation, raising funds to provide resources for cancer patients and their families. Robin and her husband Joel have been married for twenty-six years and have one child, Reagan, who will attend Concordia College in Seward this fall. And gentlemen, we need a motion to ratify this appointment, please.
Move that the mayor's appointment be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve this appointment.
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
You said to fill Kim Hofer's position?
Yes, Kim Hofer resigned, uh.
But this says a three-year term.
Well, we're, we're, we're filling her position, which is a, she's stepping into what Kim's position was, which was a three.
She just got.
So she will be.
She had three years left on her term.
Or, it's a three.
Filling the unexpired term.
Unexpired term of Kim, and I'm not sure when Kim is up, but it was a three-year term.
I believe there's about two years.
I, I would think so, too, I think there's probably about two years left on it.
It, it said three, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah, it says until July twenty, twenty-five.
Okay. Good point. Any other comments?
She resigned from the park board?
Yep, she saw this and thought it was a, she was ready to do, she wanted to try something different, so, yeah. Which, it's disappointing, I mean, it's disappointing that she's getting off park board because she was a very valuable candidate, you know, member of the park board. But it's exciting to see somebody wanting to try something different and, and give, given a different, different light. So, yes. All right. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Thank you for that.
Item thirteen B, quote from C D W Corporation, the amount of eighty-two thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents for Wi-Fi hardware and services for Pawnee Plunge Water Park, Pawnee Park Baseball Field, Memorial Stadium, Bernie Square, Gerard Park, and Frankfurt Square.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from C D W Corporation for Wi-Fi and city parks be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from C D W Corporation. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay.
I was just gonna ask.
Well, yes.
I didn't want to interrupt you when you started to go on, but how, but how long were you looking at before it's implemented?
I don't know that we have a solid answer, because I T is very wrapped up in the community building. That is their A one top priority, um, until it is ready and set up. But I would say, um, by the end of the summer, it will be up and running.
That'd be really good for the baseball players.
It would help us dream.
I was laughing because baseball's over at the end of the summer.
It'll be there next year and every year after that.
But, yeah, you can understand how, and you can understand how busy they are in the new building trying to get everything going there, but, yes, good question. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Not, not seeing any, it passed, thank you.
Item thirteen C, quote from Platte Valley Communications, and the amount of one hundred and six thousand two hundred and ninety dollars and eighty cents for radio console for the joint communications center.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Platte Valley Communications for a radio console be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the quote from Platte Valley Communications for a radio console. Any discussion?
Has questions, has questions?
Yes, sir.
This is going to be located in their courthouse, correct?
You cannot respond from back there, you know better. Charlie asked the question.
Rachel Pennsitt, communications director, yes, the emergency operations center, which is located in the basement of the courthouse.
Thought that was the case, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes.
So the whole process, the discussion is we have to have a backup. And it needs to be away from the communications center, which is located at the airport. And actually going into the courthouse basement is really the most practical because they're in pretty, they're kind of set up for it, you know, because of what they do.
Yes.
So it was, it was pretty logical to make that move. And we looked at quite a few other.
We talked about other options.
We talked about other ideas.
Yes.
That was the, that was the best one.
Yes.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
All right. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen D, quote from General Traffic Controls, and the amount of one hundred and forty thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars for pedestrian crosswalk upgrades.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from General Traffic Controls, uh, for crosswalk upgrades be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to accept the quote for general traffic control for pedestrian crosswalk upgrades. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen E, quote from Truck Center Companies, and the amount of thirty-two thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars and seventy-six cents for emergency replacement motor for the semi-truck at the transfer station.
Mr. Mayor, I move the quote from Truck Center Companies for motor replacement be accepted.
Second. We have a motion and a second to accept the quote from Truck Center Companies. Any discussion?
Do we know off the top of our head how many tractors do we have pulling for the solid waste?
I bet we can get that answer for you.
We have six units down there, currently two are on the road, two are broke down. One's a shag truck and a backup unit to put on the highway if we have to, only if we have to. And the last one is just a lot-only shag truck.
Okay.
That's our current inventory.
Okay, so fixing this truck then makes three on the road, and it makes absolute sense. Yeah, awesome. All right. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen F, quote from Crouch Recreation Incorporated, and the amount of thirty-two thousand eight hundred and one dollars for picnic tables for Frankfurt Square.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the quote from Crouch Recreation, Inc., for picnic tables be accepted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the quote from Crouch Irrigation, Recreation.
How many, how many, uh, how many tables?
Twelve.
Twelve?
Any discussion, twelve tables, any other, yes, sir.
And this is paid out of the occupation tax?
No, it is part of the C I P budget for this year, it's in our capital improvement plan.
All right, any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item thirteen G, request for proposals for purchase of land for rural workforce housing project.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the request for proposals for land purchase be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to request for proposals for purchase of land for rural workforce housing project. Any discussion? I think it would be worth just a slight comment on what this is, please.
Sure. Did you want to make that, or are you asking?
You're, you're more than welcome to, since you have it called up there and I don't.
So, housing is a, I would say, a critical need for the city of Columbus. Just a few quick statistics, we have well over two thousand job openings available in Columbus and have for years. We have less than fifty homes available on the market, and that is in every single price range. Our, our rental vacancy rate is one and a half percent. A healthy vacancy rate is much higher than that. So, even if we find people to fill those jobs, they have nowhere to live if they come to Columbus. Again, housing's been a critical need for a long time. The city has done really everything we can do to positively impact housing construction. We have received every single round of rural workforce housing funds, the maximum award. We have used our local economic development funds to match those funds. We have, um, started using tax increment financing for housing. We have, um, re, we have totally changed our unified land development ordinance to remove barriers to housing construction. I could go on and on and on with the things that we have done to try to incentivize housing. We had over a thousand units queued up to be starting development this year, about thirteen hundred, and we have lost over a thousand of those units because of interest rates, land prices, material costs. And every single one of those projects have said that it is too risky for them to buy land, develop land, and build housing because of the expense of all of that. But all of them would love to be able to come to Columbus and build housing. It's the, the risk and the expense of the buying land and developing land that is pushing them out of the market, basically. So what, uh, city staff is recommending is that the city take the first step in determining if it would be feasible for the city to start thinking about doing the land acquisition and the subdivision development, and then attracting those builders that are saying they want to build housing to start building more housing, and, uh, remove some of that risk of carrying that expense on those individual builders. So, again, this is first step. It certainly isn't go, isn't signing and sealing that the city's gonna be doing housing subdivisions and housing, um, all, and solving the problem, but it is a good first step. I got a message from the, the Chamber of Commerce executive director today, and the chamber housing committee is fully in support of this. Uh, we had small group meetings with all of the council members. This is a, probably one of the greatest needs in the city of Columbus is start, is addressing the housing market. In the last five years, we've increased housing production in Columbus by, during a period of time there, about four hundred percent. But our housing study update we just did said we would need even more than the previous two thousand seventeen housing study said, so we're not even close to filling the demand that is here. So that is a nutshell of what's going on. So that is a nutshell of what's going on.
That's way more than I would have said, so I mean.
And our need is.
But yeah, in summary, the need is there. There is, there's not a discussion we have about what is going on in our community when housing doesn't come up.
Yeah.
And this is, uh, this is something we're going to try. Uh, I think the first thing we want to make sure everybody understands is this is not exclusive to someone or some company. If the, if the city does make this happen and we end up with a development beginning and Councilman Schilling, you want to build three houses that fit into the RFP that we put out? That's fine, Councilman Barr, you know, everybody has the opportunity. So I'm sure the first thing we're going to hear is that the city is going to compete with some builder. That absolutely is not the case. We're actually trying to help those builders. If those builders want to build the house that will be for this development and they will, that, that, that will come with some parameters. And so I think it's, it's a step to take. Does it work? I, I don't know. We're going to try it, you know? We know the need's there and we know the, we know the demand for that need is there. So let's try it and see what happens. Step forward and go. Anyway, any other, any other comments?
The, the complex where I live, I asked the manager if he's gotten any calls. And in the last month, he said they've averaged 10 calls a day for places to live. And he said, right now, if, if the list is long enough, he said it's going to be five years before somebody can get in.
The need is there without question. It's just finding the right answer to help make that need better. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item 13H, comments from the mayor and city council members. In compliance with the Open Meetings Act, no discussion may be held on this item.
Any council members have any comments this evening?
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
One, yes. Um, I was just going to let the community know that St. Bon's has decided that they are going to discontinue collecting recycling for their green fiber for the paper, which is a huge thing since they probably right now have more, um, green fiber containers than anywhere else. But, uh, they had a rough year this year, um, with people abusing the privilege and they found people were taking literally their garbage there from their home, dropping it in there. They said they found, um, two old backdrops for basketball hoops in there one day. They found broken and, uh, used, broken, uh, used lumber, um, concrete pieces, broken up concrete, animal, animal carcasses. And, uh, somebody told me too, they went to dump theirs off and they found a sink in one of them. So really, literally, even the kitchen sink, right? Um, and those folks took it out and didn't know what to do with it. But then even, um, just the regard for the, when the, when they were full, um, because they would rope off the entrances and chain up the bins when they were full and then people would come in through the alley and pull up in there and leave all their boxes on top of the containers. So then they, the articles are blowing all over the neighborhood and city, and then the, not city staff, school personnel is running all over the neighborhood collecting. So because of that, the school personnel cannot manage cleaning all that up anymore, so. So I just wanted to let the public know if they're driving around looking for recycling, please do not leave your recycling in that lot anymore. Nobody's picking it up anymore, so that would be littering. Um, and when you're talking about garbage, hauling garbage, right now, St. Bon's is planning on throwing all of their paper away. So, which will be a huge increase in the amount of garbage that they'll be hauling, but right now, for that, for that time. Anyway, thank you.
All right, thank you. I have one comment. I, I think it's news that many may not have heard today and it's exciting news for the city of Columbus. Uh, this afternoon at 1:30, a Columbus citizen was named to be the state's new economic development director. KC Bayletz will now, uh, sit in that position for Governor Pillen. I, I think we can all be excited about having someone like KC representing the state, but better than that, representing Columbus's interests when they fall in the right spot. So kudos to Governor Pillen for selecting him and kudos to KC for saying yes. Um, see, when you see KC, congratulate him. So, all right. Movement, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
Uh, I've had a few individual residents reach out with comments and seen a lot of posts on, on social media uh, about your evaluations. It just came from the county. And I just wanted to point out that the city does not set your home valuations. If you have comments, that would be directed to the county. Thank you.
Sorry, I did not recognize you.
Uh, excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I would like to compliment staff on the graphic. It is exactly what I had intended it be and thank you very much.
All right. We will now move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R23-76, approving the agreement with Mark S. Howater, M.D., for medical direction and medical control of the emergency medical dispatch.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of resolution number R23-76?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R23-76. Any discussion?
Do we want Mrs. Pensick to explain to the rest of the council what it is?
We certainly could because I can see she wants to get up here again and tell you that.
Rachel Pensick, communications director. Um, so what we are doing is developing an emergency medical dispatch program. This is the instructions that our dispatchers are able to give over the phone in medical emergencies. Um, because it is a medical service, it needs medical direction. So we will go through every single question with Dr. Howater and he will approve instructions given.
Awesome. And Dr. Howater is also the medical director for the fire department. So I mean, we're, we're, and for everything within the city in that regard. So that, that, you know, that works out really well.
This will be an awesome tool for our communication department.
Yes, it will be. Yes, it will be. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you.
Any, well, any questions for Rachel? All right, thank you, Rachel.
It's been a lot of, a, a long time coming and Rachel and the fire department have really put a lot of work into it. It will be a great advancement.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R23-77, approving a grant agreement with the Federal Aviation Administration for fiscal year 2023 Airport Improvement Program.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R23-77 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R23-77. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R23-78, approving the discretionary capital improvement project policy.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R23-78 be adopted.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R23-78. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on their first reading.
Item 15A, ordinance number 23-06, approving the addendum to the purchase agreement with Great Plains State Bank for purchase of the city-owned property at 241914th Street to revise the purchase price from $200,000 to $142.6 to provide for environmental remediation escrow account.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 23-06 be read by number only.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 23-06 by number only. Any discussion?
So that tells us that the tanks are still in the ground.
They are and they will have to be cleaned up.
Out of curiosity, did the city, when we purchased this property, did we have any concessions of the such?
So there is old documentation that, I don't even remember when it was that was the purchase was, decades and decades and decades ago, that it was disclosed that there was tanks. The city did some testing, but elected not to do the remediation because it's under, you know, the building.
And of course, you know, the regulations back then weren't as tight as they are now either.
Correct.
That's the other thing that would have to be considered. Great question, though.
But if, if they had left the building up, they wouldn't have to worry about it. They're, they're tearing the building down.
Exactly.
Yep. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. Brings us up to ordinances on, oh yeah, we've got it. That was just to suspend the rules. I'm sorry.
Ordinance number 23-06.
Mr. Mayor, move for a motion, or move for ordinance number 23-06 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 23-06. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay? Motion passes. That brings us up to ordinances on the second reading.
Item 16A, ordinance number 23-04, amending sections 92.02 and 92.03 of chapter 92 of title four of the Columbus City Code to define scrapping and declare scrapping in residential zones as a nuisance. No motion is necessary. This is second reading. You should probably ask the public if there's any.
Is there anyone from the public that wants to discuss ordinance number 2304? Uh, seeing none with no motion needed, we'll move forward, uh, that being the end. I would like to thank everybody for tonight's meeting. We had a very full agenda and meeting adjourned.